Board for October 15, 2020. And if whoever's here, if you could please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll try to do this in unison and we'll see how well we do. I pledge allegiance to the plan.
To the flag. In the United States of America. Into the republic. Into the republic for which it stands. A nation under God. Endurable with liberty and justice.
We're really not good at that, but it's in the heart. It comes from the heart. Okay, so could we have roll call for attendance, please?
Absolutely. Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa. Member Clerk Raymond.
Present.
Member Covino.
Present.
Member Españo.
Present.
Member Gaffney.
Here.
Member Rappaport.
Okay. Well, we have a term, so we're going to start.
Yep, go ahead Barbara, that's your part first.
There's an announcement. The town of Burlington will be holding the October 15, 2020 Planning Board as a virtual electronic meeting due to the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 crisis. As such, the governor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020 authorizing remote meetings under General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20.
So this meeting is held via Cisco Webex and accessible as follows. The link is also available on the Planning Board website and on the posted agenda on the town calendar. The meeting, so it's townofberlincolnwebex.com. The meeting number is 173-889-7351, meeting password 2020. You can also join by phone, 617-315-0704. It's also being broadcast through BCAT on Government Comcast 99, RCN 15, Verizon 4 to Channel 41, and streamed on Facebook Live via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx phone, Facebook Live, WebEx chat, and email at Burlington Planning at Burlington.org. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves. If you have any questions regarding participation during the meeting, please call the planning staff at 7812701645 or email at planning@berlincoln.org. All votes will be taken by a roll call vote. And then just the first order of business, which the chairman will announce, will be, we will be going into executive session and leaving this meeting, but we'll probably 20, 20 minutes, 20, 25 minutes or so, and then reconvening back in the session. With that, I hand it back to the chairman.
Thank you. So as Kristin said, we are entering into executive session to discuss pending litigation. I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I will make a motion to enter into executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, in order to discuss/consider strategy with respect to litigation in the matter of General Walker Estates LLC versus Lou at All Land Court Document Number 20, MASC miscellaneous 000342, where an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Planning Board, and the chair so declares, and to reconvene an executive session at the conclusion, excuse me, to reconvene in regular session at the conclusion of executive session, as authorized by Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21B 4.
This is Mike, I'll second.
There's your unmuted. Chairman LaRue. Vice Chairman Impampa. Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, does everyone now have the information to get to executive session? Brenda?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
All right, great. We'll be back.
All right, see you later.
Everybody, and to the people who are waiting and listening, thank you for your patience. Our executive session is over and we are ready to move on to the rest of our agenda. We do have some continuances and withdrawals that we need to take up first. If I may have a motion, please.
Motion to take item 8B out of order.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Please start.
Vice Chairman Impampa. Member Clerk Raymond. Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
So Barbara, you should, you probably read the, what this, the, we actually didn't put what this was. So this is.
This is for you.
We didn't put the, so this is the definitive subdivision for Zero Birch Street.
Okay. So what we're discussing right now is a motion to accept a withdrawal regarding this particular definitive subdivision of land in Burlington at Birch Street. And if I, I think we just need a motion about that.
Uh, good. The Planning Board hereby accepts the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice the application for approval of a definitive subdivision entitled definitive subdivision of land in Burlington, Mass, Birch Street, prepared by Alan C. Nelson, PLS dated March 20, March 2, 2020, as requested by the applicant's attorney in a letter dated October 15, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, I don't want to speak too much longer in too much time. If anyone is listening and wants to know more information about why there's a withdrawal, there's a letter from the Building Department, and we certainly can get that to anyone who it's, it was a matter of, a legal matter that ended up being the reason for this withdrawal. And if anyone would like any more information, just listening, viewing, please contact the Senate Department. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items 8D and E together and out of order.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
And because it's not written, I just want to mention what those two things were. They were the Planning Board applications for special permits under 4314G wireless communication facility, as well as 848 small cell wireless facility outside of the right-of-way for 49 Middlesex Turnpike with the applicant's new singular wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T CO Centerline Communication. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want a further motion?
Yes, please.
The Planning Board hereby accepts the request of new singular wireless PCS LLC doing business AT&amp;T regarding centerline communications to withdraw the application for special permit pursuant to Section 4.3.1 for G wireless communication facility at 848 small wireless facilities outside of the right-of-way of the Burlington zoning buyer for the property at 279 Cambridge Street without prejudice or requested by the applicant's attorney in an email dated October 13, 2020.
So that's 49 Middlesex Turnpike, not 279 Cambridge Street, just to clarify, but everything else is correct.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Okay, this is Barbara again. Next, we have citizens' time. Anyone wishing to make a comment or ask a question on an item that is not on our agenda, please identify yourself now. Do we see anyone staff? No? Okay, then we will move on to announcements. Kristin?
So Madam Chair, as much as announcements are important, so is our town council's time and having to jump off at 7:00. If the board doesn't mind, if we can hold announcements until after the 108 Muller Road discussion?
Absolutely. May I have a motion to take matter, item 8A out of order? Is that what we want to do?
So may. Check in.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impampa.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Españo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you Liz. Item 8A is a continued public hearing application for approval of amendment to a definitive subdivision plan 108 Muller Road. Edward and Elena Iviskaya are the applicants. And who is here representing the applicants?
Madam Chair, Brian Levy.
Hi Brian.
Good evening.
Thanks for joining us. Thanks for your patience.
I didn't know if Kristin, you wanted to have a report, you wanted to deliver first, or I can start?
Why don't you kick us off and I'll certainly jump in.
Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you for holding this hearing earlier in the evening than usual. I appreciate it. When we left you last time, there were a few remaining issues. The main one seemed to be the Conservation Commission and securing the comments of the Conservation Commission before this board took any action. Last, so what we did was, rather than having this hearing last time, we continued it to give us a chance to get in front of the Conservation Commission. There was a public meeting at which the Conservation Commission reviewed and considered the modification application to shift the driveway. There was a full discussion, and then a document was posted on your website after a vote was taken by the, actually, there was no vote, there were just comments that were delivered by the commission members, and the email came from the conservation agent, and it said as follows, quote, "The Conservation Commission supports the shift of the driveway further from the pond. They did express concerns about grading, drainage, and tree plantings associated with the driveway. They will, however, fully review drainage and grading as part of their notice of intent permit review." So that was the comment from the Conservation Commission, commenting, I think favorably, on the movement and saying that they supported the movement of the driveway as we're showing it in this modified plan, roughly moving it about 10, 15 feet away from the pond. Also on this issue, the town council has commented to you before that in terms of the order of permitting, that there's no need for my client to secure a order of conditions first before the Planning Board acts. It's the applicant's choice in terms of the phasing of the permitting, and we've chosen to do this modification first with the Planning Board because it would move the road further from the pond, which would put us in a better position with the, with the Conservation Commission moving pavement away from the pond. And so we've chosen to go down this route. Nor do the Planning Board's rules and regulations require that there be a prior decision on the NOI before a decision on the modification or amendment of the subdivision. Just a couple of other quick points, one of those being landscaping. The Planning Board had asked us to show landscaping. We did on the plan that was submitted, and we showed a series of trees along either side of the driveway. We've come to learn that the Russells may not be in favor of that. My client's position is whatever the board decides, they will abide by. So if there are trees, or there are no trees, or there are fewer trees, whatever you decide, my clients are fine with that. We also heard discussion last time by the Planning Board about concerns with drainage and grading, and we have submitted documents to the Planning Board on those issues. And Alan Nelson is also available to briefly summarize them, but I think that, subject to the, Madam Chair, unless you want to hear from Mr. Nelson, I would say that the Conservation Commission has sort of addressed this issue, and has said in its comments that they're gonna, under the NOI, they're gonna fully review drainage and grading. So we don't need to get into that unless you would like us to, we would certainly do that. That's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Levy. At this time, I think we can hold off on that. I'd like to hear from our town council and from Kristin, and then we'll see if any members of the board have questions that are specific to that.
Sure, let me just quickly start. The items that you discussed at the last meeting were trees, grading, drainage, and just ensuring, so those three things. We, I did attend the Conservation Commission meeting last Thursday, it was very good. They did have some questions about the just drainage. It wasn't clear that there was a permeable pavement driveway. They did want to make sure that there wasn't any runoff, especially as it kind of tips toward 30 Cormier Road a little, just to make sure that if there needs to be a gravelled trench or some other type of measure, just to be sure that there isn't any runoff. They, they had asked the Planning Board to make sure that they looked at that. They were favorable of the trees, as mentioned, the Russells did mention that they liked the viewshed of the pond, which I'm sure, certain we can work out. They also, the Russells mentioned grading changes that had happened over time, and I think what that made us think about was just to make sure that it was very clear that any changes to the site, grading, construction, anything, be absolutely on the applicant's property, within the easements that they have interest in. So, and to make sure that they mark those areas in the field prior to construction. So you'll see those conditions reflected in, in the draft decision that you have before you. So in terms of the, kind of the, this action and the amendment, the amendment to the subdivision is simply the movement of the driveway. There's no new waivers being requested as part of this. In terms of that question that I know was asked at the last meeting, especially by Member Gaffney, I think at the end, as to kind of what happens, what are the options for the board? I would give that to Adam to weigh in quickly before we get into discussions.
Thank you Kristin, and thank you Adam for staying with us. We would love to get your advice and input now.
Sure, Madam Chair, so, so thank you. So I think that my presence was primarily requested tonight so that I could provide additional feedback or answer any additional questions that the board might have as a follow-up to the, the public hearing that was conducted a few weeks ago. I think I can echo what Kristin said, certainly not on the facts, because I didn't participate in the Conservation Commission meeting, but with regard to what is before the Planning Board and what is, what it is that you're being asked to act upon, it is an amendment, so the underlying subdivision approval will not change unless you grant the amendment, in which case, of course, it would be, the amendment would be incorporated into the underlying approval, but if you choose to deny the amendment, that does not amount to a denial of the underlying subdivision. That subdivision decision still stands. Obviously, it is subject to appeal, and so it has not yet become final. But what's before you is very simply the relocation of the driveway that you see here on the screen, and whether the relocation of the driveway is consistent with the purpose and intent of the subdivision control law and your rules and regulations. As Kristin had indicated, there are no additional or different waivers that are being requested. If that were the case, then you could apply the well-known sort of public interest standard in determining whether a waiver should be granted or denied, and you would have great discretion in doing that. But in this case, there are no new waivers. So you're, you're really and truly looking at the relocation of the driveway to determine whether it is more, less, or equally consistent with the subdivision control law as the original location of the driveway. And, and making that decision is, is, is what you're, what you're now tasked with, irrespective of the underlying approval, irrespective of the pending litigation. You, of course, have the discretion to condition any amendment as you see fit. You know, a good example of that would be the, the proposed screening or landscaping that's shown on this plan. You have the discretion to require that or not, to consider preferences of neighbors and so forth as part of an approval.
Okay, thank you so much. So board members, you've heard it from Mr. Levy and Mr. Costa and from Kristin, we're talking about moving the driveway. Let's not, let's try to stay focused on that and not, not take our eye off of that, what we're actually discussing tonight, which is just the amendment. So I'm gonna go through the board again and ask people to weigh in. Joe, are you, do you have something you'd like to ask or comment on?
Nope, I'm all set.
Paul, Paul Raymond, did you have any questions or comments?
No, I'm just opposed to it. I did, by the way, one comment that kind of bears on this. I asked Brady today, since this is at the end of a long, long, long driveway into this area, how wide, and, and the, the right-of-way is 15 feet, I wanted to know how wide that big ladder truck was to be going down a 15-foot driveway, which I, as I told you, at one point when I went to look at this area, was absolutely complete. So I'm just opposed to anything else going on down there. But I did want to know how safe, if you will, that it is to have, to have above that big ladder truck going down that 15-foot right-of-way in the wintertime, and, you know, how much leeway they would have one way or another before ending up in the swamp.
Madam Chair, if we could respond?
Yes, please.
Alan Nelson, I think, is on the line. Alan, could you talk about the, your experience with these, this width of driveway in Burlington?
Hello? Could you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. Well, I'm not a fire truck expert, but I know Commonwealth has a limited width on vehicles, and it's 109 inches from what we've understood. As far as widths of driveways, I know, just to take an example, Gary Rooping has a driveway on Bedford Street that's 13 feet wide, and it's almost twice as long as the driveway that's proposed here. And then if you go a few feet up opposite Francis Wyman Road, there's a road called Haven Terrace. You're most probably familiar with that. That has a 12-foot right-of-way that accesses three, not three, not four, but six houses. So it has been done.
If I could interject for just a minute?
Sure.
I, I don't, I don't know if it pays for us to look at other surrounding developments. It's, this is, we're just talking about shifting the driveway here. So to address Paul's question, you, I think you answered that about the size of the truck.
True.
Paul, I just want to make sure you know what, we're not talking about going down that long, long driveway off of Muller Road. This one is coming in from, so it's significantly shorter in length than the one you were looking at when you drove down there. I could be mistaken, but I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same thing. This is in the other direction toward Cormier, and it's much shorter than that other drive that we originally looked at when we looked at this development.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So are you, are you opposed to shifting this driveway, Paul? Because that's all we're talking about right now, is just shifting the driveway that goes to Cormier so that it's a little bit further away from the pond.
I understand that, but what are the implications? Why do they suddenly have come to the need for the public good to shift that, that far away from the pond? I don't get it. I don't see what the other purpose in this is, but it's gonna cost some money to change the driveway, and are they just doing this as a goodwill gesture? Or does this change any of the conditions down there that might possibly, for instance, allow the, a development of another lot?
That's not my understanding. I don't think that this shift has anything to do with that. I think the shift has more to do with questions regarding the right-of-way, and that by shifting the driveway, the, it's my understanding that the, the right-of-way is more clear. Is that, I'm not sure I'm expressing that correctly. Kristin, would you like to weigh in?
So shifting the driveway, I think, just came down to some questions about the easement and easement rights and titles. However, I don't want to get into that necessarily, but I will mention that in terms of additional lots, there is no change in frontage. There was a frontage variance granted for the lot in question. Does not change at all by this amendment or modification. So as mentioned, this is, this really is just changing the locat, shifting the location of the driveway, and in that shift, trying to address the neighbor's concerns that they may have in terms of drainage and screening and some other items that we did not get at in the original subdivision that we are trying, attempting to get at here to try to just improve as much as we can from where we were, an already approved subdivision.
Okay, thank you Kristin. Paul, does that answer your question?
Kinda, but I'm still, don't get it as to why this is an important thing to shift this driveway, and have basic unease about it, if you will, and that whole Muller Road development that's an end of, that long a driveway. Don't tell me about what's going on in other places in the town. I don't need to know that to, to affect my judgment on this particular project. And as I say, it became even more important to me when I tried to go down there and the road was completely blocked, and, and I developed a, a, a deep concern because I said, what the heck would happen if something went boom on the other side of that big truck in the middle of the driveway? And that doesn't, I realize, bear on this particular movement of the driveway, but it's just, I believe I have a right to vote as I want.
Of course you do.
On this project.
Absolutely.
And I think you're wasting your time trying to convince me otherwise, although, what the heck, I'm sitting here at home, I got my coffee, and you can take all night if you want to. Thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me an opportunity.
Hi, thank you, Paul. Ernie?
No, no further questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Bill? Gaffney?
Madam Chair, yeah, I took the opportunity just again to go down there because the neighbors commented the last time about the elevation and the change of the driveway. So I kept that in mind, I drove by there, and it really, again, taking a look at that particular piece of it, I was saying that if you changed that driveway, and I'm looking at elevations here, in the comment, I think last time, they talked about putting in a retaining wall, and the, now if you, you raise it up here, up on top of that hill, then the water's gonna change dramatically to where it was with the existing driveway that we approved. So I think if I would take into account the relocation of the driveway with regard to the water runoff, I would say that's probably a negative issue with regard to this, so I would not be in trouble with that due to the increased location and up on the hill there. there. If you stand at the bottom of Cormier and look up that hill for the house, it's what, 20 feet, and you're probably now going, it looks like, from the elevations, it's from the existing one, it's 185 to 189, fairly flat, and now this one goes from 182 to 195. So you're up on a hill, and you cut into the hill, and now you're going to have issues there. So thank you, Madam Chair.
You're on mute, Barbara.
Sorry, Mike Espio, do you have any questions or comments?
Regarding the move, no, Madam Chair, all set, thanks.
Thank you. Brenda?
I have nothing further to add. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. The only thing I want to do is I'd like to hear from the neighbors regarding the type of screening that they would prefer. I think that that's still unclear to me, so I'd like to turn this over to any members of the audience that are neighbors that would like to weigh in, and I'm specifically looking for that information about screening.
Madam Chair, Neil Russell, Sue Russell, 26 Cormier. Our lawyer, Rachel Bame, is on the line. We have sent a letter two meetings ago regarding some aspects of this. I believe we would like her to go over those points in that letter. I think they're relevant to the way that this vote is being considered. We do have additional concerns about the landscaping. There are also several other abutters on the line we'd like to have the chance to speak up. So I would like to sort of provide the 26 Cormier summary maybe at the end of those other remarks, if that's all right.
That is okay, but I just want to caution everyone that what we're talking about is the shifting of the driveway. We're not talking about the whole project. We're really only discussing the shifting of the driveway tonight.
That's exactly the major point that our council would like to address, is the first point. I think, at the risk of misquoting, I would like to throw in here that the town council opened his remarks with that exact point last time, saying specifically to the planning board, and I'm quoting to the best of my ability, "You can choose to hearken back to what was before the planning board previously." That was his nearly first remark. That was followed by several other remarks, as lawyers do, talking about various scenarios. However, it's our take and our lawyer's take that all aspects of this plan are under consideration because this was filed as an amendment, not as a minor engineering change. So our lawyer would speak to that point if that's okay.
I think, why don't we hear from your lawyer very briefly just about that point? I know you said she had a number of issues she wanted to discuss, but if we could just listen to that point briefly first, and then we can get advice from our town council on that specific point, if we could handle it that way, I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
And also, Madam Chair, just to know, our town council does have a hard stop right before seven, so just to try to have that flow just be as concise as we can try to be. Thanks.
Please, if you could be as concise as possible before we lose our town council at seven.
I'll be quick. Madam Chair, member of the board, thank you for hearing from me. My name is Rachel Bame. As Neil pointed out, I represent a couple of the abutters tonight. And I think, rather than going through my letter point by point, because you've had an opportunity to review it, I just want to say that from the beginning, my clients haven't had an opportunity to really face this head-on. So the variance hearing that they never got notice of was really the beginning of this process, and so from then on, they have been sort of chasing this project, and they've been opposed to it as soon as they received notice. And, you know, they didn't receive notice of the original hearing, and this was filed as a major change to sort of cure that notice period, and all the abutters who have spoken about this project are opposed to it. And they have asked the applicant to reconsider their initial proposal in front of the zoning board, which was to have the driveway go out through Muller Road. It's just not appropriate the way it is designed, and whether this is a, you know, small shift in the driveway, or whether there is a major shift in the driveway, the fact remains that they have challenged this project from the very beginning. It's not appropriate for a number of reasons, and I will let the--
Smaller road right now.
I will let the abutters speak about the, you know, conditions on the ground, because I have not visited the property.
If you want to listen to it.
I have looked at the plans, but I will let the abutters speak to the drainage and to the screening and what is allowed and not allowed as part of this right-of-way. And this right-of-way is really just for access and utilities. It's not for garbage barrels. It's not for a mailbox. It's not for trees. It's not for cutting into the Russells' property to change the grade or to make drainage better. So there are major issues, and we have said it many, many times, and I will turn it over now to the Russells and to others who are on the line, and I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak.
Thank you, but we can't turn it over to the Russells quite yet. What I'm asking for now is for our town council to weigh in and give us advice, because we only have him for about 10 minutes. So I'd like to make sure we have a chance to hear from our town council. The neighbors will have an opportunity to weigh in, it's just that we are in a time crunch.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So is the specific question, going back to the reference to the scope of the board's review?
My question for you is, what is it that we are supposed to be considering tonight? Are we considering only the shift of the driveway? Or, because, as, I'm sorry, I forgot the council's name for the Russells, but as council suggested, that because this is an amendment, that the entire project is now open for discussion and review. That's what I need to know from you.
So I didn't hear council say that exactly, but I certainly heard council's clients say that, and maybe that is council's opinion as well. I would disagree with that opinion, and this is my unbiased advice. I have no specific connection to the applicant here or to your neighbors here. The opinion I've consistently given to boards that I represent, and frankly, heard other town council give to boards that they represent, even when I'm representing private applicants before those boards, is that the scope of review on amendment is what is being amended. And of course, there is a gray area, aspects of the project that could be affected by that amendment. And so, by way of example, if the shifting of the driveway doesn't simply change the grading of the site and where the driveway might be placed on the ground, but also has an impact to the flow of stormwater, and therefore, the direction of stormwater runoff, maybe even the volume of stormwater runoff, if the relocation of the driveway has a greater impact to one dwelling versus another dwelling that might necessitate additional screening or buffering, those aspects, because they are directly related to, or for that matter, even somewhat indirectly related to, the amendment that's before you, I think those are all within your purview. Those are all fair game for consideration. I am not of the opinion that by virtue of an applicant submitting a request to amend a subdivision, that suddenly the board can consider, or would be right to consider, or that it would be affirmed if appealed and questioned by a judge, consideration of a different aspect of the subdivision entirely unrelated to the relocation of the driveway. If that were the case, then there would be a significant disincentive for any applicant to ever seek an amendment, because they would be jeopardizing the very permit that they are seeking to amend. They could end up with something very different, and frankly, if the composition of a board changes, if the opinions of board members simply change over time, they could essentially turn an approval into a denial simply by attempting to tweak something by way of an amendment. So again, I'm of the opinion that what's before you is the relocation of the driveway and any other aspects of the subdivision that would be directly or indirectly affected by the relocation of that driveway.
So, Madam Chair, if I can just weigh in?
Who is that?
That's Rachel Bame for the Russells.
Okay, yes, you may.
So, as we pointed out in our letter, once the applicant decided to amend the plan, not as a minor modification, but as an amendment, and renotice, and we think that they did that in order to cure the notice issue that was initially there, once they decided to renotice, the board, by choosing this path, the board, under Section 7.2.2, it says, "The planning board shall evaluate the proposed amendment in accordance with the approval criteria set out in Section 6.6.4, and may approve with conditions or deny the proposed amendment, given the basis for denial in accordance with 6.6.3." So the board has the opportunity at that point, once it is renoticed, to look at the entire application. And that was, you know, that was set out in some detail in our letter.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bame. Adam, do you have anything else you want to say about that?
Well, only that I think, and I say this with great respect for Attorney Bane, but I think that the very quote she just recited, I think, tells the story. "The board shall evaluate the proposed amendment." Doesn't say "shall evaluate the proposed subdivision," "shall evaluate the entire plan." You're evaluating the amendment to the plan. So I'm not going to speak to whether or not the noticing of the amendment cures any defect that may or may not have existed with the original noticing of the subdivision. If that was the intent of Attorney Levy, then that's for him to argue to the courts in the context of the pending litigation, to the extent that notice becomes an issue. But what I will say is that what's before the board is the amendment, and I continue to stand by my position that it's only the amendment that is ripe for consideration by the board, and again, aspects of the subdivision that might be affected by that amendment, but that it doesn't open up the entire subdivision plan. I appreciate that Burlington has opted to create, by way of regulation, a sort of multi-tiered process for seeking changes to subdivision plans. Most municipalities, in fact, almost every other municipality I represent, doesn't have anything called a minor engineering change. You either seek a subdivision approval, or you amend that subdivision approval. And when you seek an amendment, you follow the same process in terms of notice and publication that you would for the original subdivision, only the review is more circumscribed because it's limited to the amendment. The fact that Burlington has opted to provide an even simpler process for these, quote-unquote, "minor engineering changes," in my mind, that doesn't affect the reality that it's only the changes that are before you. Otherwise, again, the result would be absurd, that no applicant would ever risk putting the whole subdivision at risk by virtue of amending, you know, minor aspects of that subdivision, something not so minor as to only trigger a minor engineering change, something that would require a true amendment. But again, from my perspective, no applicant would ever seek such a change if the entire underlying subdivision were put at risk. Madam Chair.
Thank you. Actually, I'm mindful of the time and knowing that we're going to lose Adam very shortly. I want to see if any of my fellow board members have questions for Adam on this before we lose him. We only have about five minutes.
I have a question for him, but hold on.
Okay, let me just quickly see if board members have any questions for Adam before he leaves. Speak up. Okay. Hearing no one? All right, Mr. Russell, you had a question for our town council?
Yes, I would like him to directly address his own quote from the last meeting, in which, and I hope I got the wording correct, you're on the record as saying to the planning board, "You can choose to hearken back to what was before the board previously."
So unfortunately, Madam Chair, I don't have a memory. I've had two meetings a night for the past three nights, and I've had dozens over the past couple of weeks, so I can't say that I recall the exact quote that I might have made in a meeting a couple of weeks or more ago. What I can say is that I learned a long time ago, practicing municipal law, not to tell board members how to vote. That's not my role. So certainly, if board members choose to hearken back to the original subdivision, and you've already heard, I've already heard one of your board members say that they're convinced as to how they're going to vote, and they're prepared to sit with, he's prepared to sit with his coffee all night, if that's what it takes, I'm not going to tell him how to vote tonight. That's not my role. All I can tell you is, all I can give you is good legal advice as to my position with respect to the task that's before you, the appropriate scope of your review, and what you should consider in making a decision. If board members choose to consider other matters that, in my mind, might be beyond the appropriate scope of review, or in my mind, might be subject to challenge, if there were to be a challenge, that's a decision each member has to make for him or herself. And I guess that's the best I can say. I stand by my position that what's before you is the amendment, and I'm confident that I made a statement to that effect a couple of weeks ago during your last session of the public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Costa. I have a question for you. I just want to, I think I know the answer, but I want to clarify. If this amendment is denied, am I correct in my understanding that all it does is move the driveway back to its original position?
So, Madam Chair, that is my position now, or my stance, maybe I shouldn't use the word "position." That's my stance. It wouldn't surprise me if Attorney Bane or her clients argue otherwise, because we've heard them say that the scope of your review, they believe, is the entire subdivision. And I think that, to extend that a bit further, the suggestion would be that by virtue of reopening a public hearing or opening a new public hearing and attempting to cure any failures in notice that previously existed, I suspect that maybe their position, therefore, is that if the whole thing is again before you, and the whole thing is denied, that the subdivision is denied, and somehow the applicant has lost its original approval, I'll leave that to them to argue before the courts. My position is, if this modification is denied, that the underlying decision stands, subject to the appeal that is now underway.
Okay, thank you. Attorney Bame, could you weigh in just on the question of, if this is denied, this amendment is denied, what is your understanding of what happens next? Because my understanding was that the original, as Mr. Costa said, that the original subdivision still stands, but the driveway would shift back to the original position. Could you address that, please?
Yep, that is actually our understanding, that if the amendment is denied, the original decision would stand. Now, just for everyone's edification, the initial plan didn't show the driveway within the right-of-way, or, you know, it showed a 40-foot right-of-way where a 20-foot was there. So when we talk about whether this is a minor modification or a small shift in the driveway, you're actually talking about anything that is before the planning board. What's before the planning board is this driveway, and to the extent it shifts, or it's in the right-of-way, or not in the right-of-way, or it's up against the hill, or not up against the hill, that is basically the entire application, because that's what's before the board initially and now.
So if I'm understanding you, what you're saying is if this were to be denied, the driveway would shift back to its original position, but the subdivision approval would still be in place? And I understand also that you are appealing that subdivision approval, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And is it your client's position that they would prefer that this driveway remain in its original position for whatever their reasons may be?
I will let them speak to that. I don't think they like the driveway in either position in this direction, but I will let them address that, whether they have a preference as to the original or the secondary. I think the original one was actually not in the right-of-way, so it wouldn't--
I guess what I'm asking you is, does this shift of the driveway, in your mind, impact your appeal of the original subdivision?
Regardless, whichever the board decides, we will appeal either the original or the amended. Either way, it's in litigation. So to us, in that respect, it doesn't really matter whether it's in the original position or this position. Does that answer your question?
I think it does. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. It's Joe.
I was going to bring it over to the board next, so go ahead, Joe, take it away.
All right, so a couple of questions. One was, Adam, do you have any case law on that in particular, whether the amendment reverts back to the beginning of the process, or whether it reverts back to the approval? Is there case law that you know of, number one? And number two, I heard Adam speak of the amendment in terms of curing a notice requirement. What did you mean by that?
So, Madam Chair, through you, and I'm going to speak rather quickly, because I do have to drop off momentarily, so-- to drop off momentarily, so addressing those sort of in reverse order. So I wasn't the one that raised the curing of the notice issue. I was simply responding to a comment made by Attorney Blame, that she believed that that was part of the rationale for the submittal of an amendment and a re-noticing of a butters, that it was meant to cure insufficient notice that may have occurred during the original subdivision. I think that one of the claims being made in the pending appeal is that there was a lack of notice, or insufficient notice, or incomplete notice to all the parties that would have been entitled to receive notice pursuant to the subdivision control law when this project was originally, this subdivision was originally brought to the board. And so Attorney Bame's suggestion was that this was done to cure that error. I was simply speaking to that and saying that I'm not sure that re-noticing or noticing an amendment would cure an error associated with the original subdivision, but that's neither here nor there. It's not really something that's for the board to consider. And frankly, the good news is, it's not something I have to opine on, because it's not something that is for me to consider either. It's between the private parties in the litigation. I do know that there have been references in cases, certainly in the context of the zoning act and special permits and variances to subsequent amendments, and the scope of review of those subsequent amendments being limited to the amendment and not the entire underlying special permit or variance. I can't cite the specific cases. I think there may be cases in the subdivision context as well. If the board is looking for some support for that, I can certainly provide that, obviously not on the spot and not at tonight's meeting, but I can get that information to the board, for sure.
Okay. I would be interested in that information, Madam Chair. So, you know, just one member, but.
Okay, thank you. Do any other board members have any last questions for Attorney Costa before we lose him? Anyone? Okay. Adam, thank you. I'm sorry I took you over your allotted time. I appreciate your being here. I think we're probably going to have additional questions for you offline.
Yes.
But I appreciate, you know, the time you spent with us tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate you accommodating my schedule tonight, and we'll talk soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think probably the next thing I would like to hear from, I'd like to hear more from some of the neighbors that have come to talk specifically about the shift of the driveway and about screening.
Thank you, Madam. This is a 30-Cormier Road neighbor abutting the expected, projected driveway. Just have a question first. I sent a letter to the Planning Director, Ms. Kastner. Was she able to communicate the letter to all the board members?
When was that particular? We've received a few, so when was that letter sent?
It was a week ago, 10 days ago.
A week ago.
Basically, I was explaining a number of points why this is a bad idea from our point of view, from the neighborhood point of view. But I also want to answer your question first, that you kept asking a couple of times in the last two meetings. Would that, shifting the driveway to its original idea of the applicant, will that be okay to Russell's and others? I will tell you, moving that, that's being litigated, as you know, in the court.
Right.
There is no right of 40-foot driveway cutting through more on my property side, as opposed to the current Russell's property side right now, which is being discussed. So that litigation will stand, and there is no proper documentation to claim for that driveway, which will still be litigated. I think that's my statement to you. I'm equally more opposed to that view, because it's going to cut through my property right in the middle of, between the trees. So, but still, that's not being discussed right now. I will just stick myself to some of the common observations that I will bring before the planning board. Basically, our property sits on a lot which is level with pond. So any drainage issues that are going to be rising because of the shift in the driveway to, into the hill, still within 30 feet of our foundation, any structural changes that you allow by approving this driveway in the current path as being requested, will still affect my driveway basement water conditions. My patio will get flooded. Any damages that occur subsequent to this will be litigated, and the town planning board will be held responsible for any damages that occur in my basement because of the structural modifications that are going to come out of this decision, this driveway, either location. So it will be litigated. And as I said many times in the past, this driveway is a bad idea from a neighborhood point of view, and it affects the wildlife, it increases the traffic, it destroys the property of our house, and there's a beautiful pond there, and it's a negative, negative from every aspect of the neighborhood. And there are many neighbors who share that opinion, and it's going to create, eventually, not now, maybe not now, maybe five years later, maybe 10 years later, a cut through to the shopping mall from the Cormier side, people eventually will start walking, biking, all kinds of things will happen, and there will be, eventually, opening up, losing privacy by both Russell's and the other family, which I represent.
Okay, thank you. So just, I just want to make sure I understand, on this particular amendment, on the shifting of the driveway, do you have a preference between its original location and the location that it has shifted to?
No, we oppose driveway from the Cormier side total. Russell's and one of the families oppose this, and we will take legal action, one way or the other, if it is going, would go forward, any structural modification.
Okay, I understand. I just wanted to know if there was a preference, but you're saying neither one is preference. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay, are there any other neighbors present who want to weigh in on this? Are we seeing any other neighbors that want to?
The DeAngelis's were on the line. 24 Cormier. Joe, are you there?
Yes, I am. And I'm looking at the plan that's on my television right now, and I'm trying to find out where I am in this plan. And if you, if that little spot on the bottom part is supposed to be the pond, it's in the wrong place. That's number one. But two, we're opposed to the whole thing of exist, trying to put Cormier Road wherever they want, because it's just not feasible.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any? I'm sorry.
That is not where the pond is, if that's the pond, if that is supposed to be the pond. And that's why I'd like either someone that can explain what this whole thing means to me. From what I see, the existing plan that they want to do, the amendment, whatever you want to call it, is not in the right place. That pond, as I said before, if it rains two or three days steady, I get water in my basement. How can I get water in my basement if the pond is way over there?
Okay, Kristen, could you? Do you know?
Brady's going to pick up the larger plan, so if you just bear, since the plan just dealt with landscaping.
Madam LaRue, this is Scott Martin. I live on Cormier Road, town meeting member in Prefect 67. So I live in 6 Cormier, and I think where Joe was talking about, if he lives at 24 on that previous map, Cormier Road stops, and his house is just after that on the left.
So am I understanding that his home is not visible on this map?
It's on Cormier, too.
I believe that his house is on Cormier, and it's just down the street from where that plan stops.
Yep, that plan was zoomed in to really focus on the driveway, but if.
Correct.
As far as the plan, you can get a little bit more of a sense of where things are. But to the point of Mr. Martin, you, I think, just. So the pond can be seen kind of behind the proposed 130.
We really can't see.
It's very small.
Yeah, I'm just.
See where Cormier is in the upper right-hand corner?
Yeah.
And the very top edge of Cormier, where it ends, that's about where 24 is.
No, he's over to the right.
I wonder, Brady, if you could, I know it's a lot of plans coming up, could you just give us a screen, like a map view, just a Google map view, just so we can get some orientation, and then we can go back to the plan?
This guy is over here.
Thank you.
He's representing 24. He's representing this guy.
Okay, so.
He's here. This is the road.
So if you take a look at this plan, 108 Mueller is, you can see that lot. If you go, Brady, if you can take your cursor and go direct kind of up to, kind of north-northeast through those two, that's, that is the roughly kind of the, where, so 30 is where the cursor is now, 26 is further back. So is 24 the house right in front of 26? Is that correct?
This is Neil Russell. Yes, the house immediately to the north.
Right there.
Yes.
That's what I was saying.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure we were.
And their little diagram, their little diagram ended right there.
So.
Right there.
Madam Chair, this is a 30-Cormier neighbor. I just want a quick point. Every time I've seen this map of the new subdivision planning, it doesn't show the pond boundaries. And as you know, Burlington property, you know, the area of accessing pond is completely on my side, and if you look at Kristen's, you know, cursor, the trees are abutting the water, are completely within my property line. I just want to make sure, whatever the applicant is showing the maps here, they're not accurate. I'm actually going to go survey done.
Okay, do we have a plan that shows the pond on it? I'm asking Brady and Kristen.
Yes, we do. I guess the question, further question is, do we have a map that we can put up that it's very clear to the whole audience exactly where the pond is? I'm not sure. Just because we haven't highlighted it. But Brian Levy, are you speaking? You're on mute. The Attorney Levy for the applicant, I'm not sure if he could help us.
I'm sorry, I've been talking to myself. So yes, there's another plan that is very similar to the one that you've been looking at, which is the aerial view, and it also does show the pond. So the purpose of this view is a little bit different, just to focus in on the driveway in that you can see the shift. But there's several plans that show the pond that are in record. There you go.
There we go. Great, thank you. Thank you, both of you. Does this plan help to answer any of your questions to the previous speaker?
It doesn't still show me how much land is clearly, because right now, I do have access completely on the bottom side of the pond, next to the applicant's property. There is a bit of strip of land that goes, and I do walk in that space, and there are woods that are going to be apparently cleared by the applicant if it gets approved, and that will be within, you know, 30 feet or 25 feet of the pond water level.
So again, Madam Chair, the reason where I think we're looking at this is because the abutter at 24 Cormier, Mr. DeAngelis had commented that he didn't see the pond, or the pond was in the wrong place on the plan, and I think that we've cleared that up now.
I agree. We can all see the pond now. That's very helpful. Thank you. Are there any other neighbors that have, that would like to weigh in? I specifically need to hear from people about screening and about drainage, what drainage they're looking for.
Madam Chair, Neil Russell.
Thank you. Go ahead, Neil.
Yes. The matter of the drainage, I briefly say that we did attend the Concom meeting last week. We were rather disappointed that they were shown a satellite photo without any elevation changes on it, and there was no discussion of the cutting into the hill or the potential change in grade on my property or the grading of the driveway at that meeting until we spoke up and requested that the new plan be shown. So we were rather disappointed about the way that was handled. At any rate, it's very clear that a certain amount, maybe several cubic yards of material would need to be removed along the right-of-way and into our property potentially in order for this new driveway to be created. Our understanding is a permeable asphalt driveway requires less than a 5% grade. The current slope, by my trigonometry calculations, now, I'm not talking about the length, I'm talking about the width of the driveway. It slopes approximately 15 degrees at its steepest point, near the large tree, and it's close to 12, 10 to 12 degrees throughout approximately 100 feet of that new proposed location. So that they're going to be cutting into the side of the hill that's there, two to four feet high, and removing that material. So clearly, some amount of grading or retention, or it is clearly going to affect my property, the drainage and the slope of my current property. That slope was created by town approval when we took possession of this property. We modified this area. The applicant approved those changes when we did it, and now seem to be seeking to reverse those changes. Now, since we made those changes in 2011 and 2012, we've said before, that area of this right-of-way used to flood regularly. We have not observed anything more than a small puddle of water there in the last eight and a half to nine years that we've been here. Since those changes were made, we're extremely concerned that digging into the hill and changing the grade, removing all that soil and grass, no matter how permeable this driveway is, is going to create runoff problems, primarily for Mr. Verada, but potentially for us, and also potentially for Mr. DeAngelis. There is some sort of an aquifer underneath this area, and digging into this area very well may disturb that aquifer. So that's the drainage issue from our standpoint and the modification to the property. As far as the screening goes, we don't want any screening. We never asked for any screening. We don't know why people keep bringing this up. We enjoy our view to the pond. Including more plants, shrubs and trees along this area is only going to create maintenance issues, it's going to create future disputes. Our understanding is the permeable pavement requires an extensive list of maintenance issues, including clearing ice and snow regularly, as well as leaves and other debris. And this will only lead, planting more material in this area will only lead to more disputes about keeping that driveway clear and potentially causing more runoff. So we're totally against any kind of screening, any additional plantings here. So that's, I think, addressing your two specific questions.
Thank you. May I ask a question? Were you talked about the hill where you thought there would need to be some of that hill excavated? On whose property is that hill where you are concerned about them digging out?
So our entire property was regraded from our house down to the edge of the right-of-way, which is our property. To be specific, again, they have a right-of-way to pass across here. They do not have a right-of-way to modify this without our approval. And harkening back to the 2011 regrading plan, this was approved by the town and the neighbor to put that material in here. So removing that is going to change the grade of my existing hill here and/or require a retaining law. As I said, if you look closely at the elevations on here, there's a minimum of two feet of material going to be taken out from my hill. This is my property. It is within, potentially, we'd have to survey this the right-of-way, of course, but from my understanding, from a legal standpoint, that is my property, and they cannot modify the grade without our permission.
Madam Chair, may I be heard?
In a moment, Mr. Levy. I would like to ask Kristen a question regarding. Kristen a question regarding Mr. Russell's statement that that we need to change the grade on his property within the right of way and that we aren't allowed, that's not allowed. Do we, can you weigh in on that? I, I, I need to understand.
As I mentioned previously, um, that after the Conservation Commission and some of these grade questions, as well as in review of the, um, engineers', uh, review of the grade and, and submission of the report about that, uh, we wanted to ensure and therefore condition that there any construction and/or grading associated with this driveway must occur within areas that are under the control, direct control, or they have rights within an easement, um, to build this driveway. So to be clear that there's, they can't do anything on the outside of the easement and all of that land should be marked in the field to make sure that happens.
I understand that, but my question is more, how much are they allowed to do within the easement? I understand there's an easement and they can, they therefore have the right to pass, but do they have the right to excavate and change the grade within the easement?
So you still go back to the general, um, is the, the general regulation of that you can't, you can't create more runoff from a property or improvement to your property, to the neighboring lots and pre-imposed conditions? So if, if in fact their driveway construction was providing more runoff to the neighbors than obviously in the unimproved condition, then they would need to mitigate it. And that's why you're the, the permable driveway. And that's why I mentioned if, um, on the downward slope toward thirty, if they potentially needed to put additional, um, crushed stone or other drainage that, um, we entertain and/or the, um, Conservation Commission may also, um, discuss through their, out their NOI. But I also would, um, they, um, the engineer, Al Nelson, went out to take a look at this and do some investigation. And I think it might be beneficial for the group to hear, um, his investigation, um, after hearing from the Russells and some of the issues that were identified. But I'm not sure if Attorney Levy, if, I, I know you had a time of constraint as well. I'm not sure, um, if that.
From Attorney Levy and then hear from the engineer.
Yes, so, uh, Madam Chair, first, I think we need to talk about real things that are happening here, real facts. We have submitted a drainage report and grading plans. Those have been in the record for a couple of weeks. Nobody, nobody has elected to challenge them by filing competing plans, creating real questions by real engineers about real facts. All we have is anecdotes here and a supposition. This area previously had a driveway on it. We are reestablishing that driveway in essence. We are perfectly within our right. We have an easement over this area. We're entitled to make reasonable use of that easement area. The cut and fill here is two feet. There is no retaining wall. And, uh, the Russells are several feet above the driveway. They're in no danger of any drainage flowing uphill unless water is going to flow uphill. And the, uh, calculations that have been provided, uh, that have been before this board for at least a couple of weeks, maybe three or four weeks now, show that the pervious pavement with this stone underneath it has excess capacity to handle any stormwater from that driveway. So the real facts are, there's no issue here with respect to drainage. There's no issue here with respect to grating. And there's no issue here with respect to my client's right to make a reasonable use, and this is certainly a reasonable use of the easement to which it is entitled. Thank you. And, and also, Your Honor, Madam Chair, I will add that.
You can call me Your Honor anytime you want.
All of this, all of this is going to be reviewed, must be reviewed and approved as the Conservation Commission said in its decision in the notice of intent. So we're going to be drilling into all these details with the Conservation Commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Levy. Is, is the engineer here?
Alan?
Yes, right here. Good evening.
Hi, um, can you specifically address the issue that Mr. and Mrs. Russell have brought forward regarding the grading of their property and how this would affect their property and change the flow of water?
Yes, I'd be glad to. As Attorney Levy suggested before, there used to be a gravel driveway in the same location we're proposing it. The only difference is, is that we're not proposing to restore the same elevation of the previous driveway, which the Russells were familiar with, and the Russells covered over and filled in. If we were to retrieve that same grade, there would be a need for retaining wall as the Russells would, um, and, and assert it. The design we have before the board is to put it in the grade that splits the difference of the existing grade. So basically, we cut in two feet into the hill within the twenty-foot easement, create a two percent cross-section grade across the driveway, and then less than two feet to slope down. So we're going to basically create a shelf in that hill to create the driveway. So the question comes in, what happens to the drainage runoff? Well, we're not changing the direction any water is flowing. If anything, we're intercepting it with a shelf. And then that shelf is made out of, um, permeable pavement, which means basically you play, as if you had a sponge on the kitchen table that had the abrasive side that you clean the pots with on the top. And you pour water through it and it gets absorbed in the sponge below. We calculated the volume of that stone sandwich, if you would have, below the pervious pavement. And it would handle anything up to and beyond a twenty-five-year storm. So basically what we're saying is that, uh, we're going to improve on the drainage situation that's there now. Instead of having a steep slope that's graded with grass that allows for a faster flow of water, we intercept that, slow it down at the driveway, put it into the ground and allow it to recharge the aquifer that concerns the pond. And as far as grades differences, the highest point of the new driveway would be elevation ninety-three. The Russells are at two hundred and six. The Veradas are at one eighty-eight, which they've been since the very beginning. And incidentally, when their house was built, there, there was an existing driveway, the gravel driveway was there when their house was constructed. Uh, about the same time that that lot was created, the Verada's lot was created in two thousand and four, I believe, uh, no, two thousand and six. That's when the planning board required to a forty-foot right of way to be shown on the plan as a condition of the subdivision approval. And that's where the subdivision approval in two thousand and six actually created a forty-foot easement. Question now is, you know, who owns the easement? And that's, that's up to the attorneys to sort out. But far as the grading and the changes in the grades, yes, the Russells did change the grade and they did change the drainage characteristics. As far as the changes of grade that we're proposing, we're changing the grade not to the original driveway grade that they filled in, but to a higher grade that splits the grade cross-sectional wise into the hill. So it's only less than two feet of a slope into the hill, a two percent grade across the driveway, and then less than two feet down on the lower side at the worst case scenario.
Okay.
The rest of it would level off. I hope that.
Can I ask a question of the engineer?
Yes, please.
Um, can, uh, can you weigh in on the comment about the percent of grade and the comment that was made, the percent of grade and permeable, um, the effectiveness of the permeable driveway? And then the second question, or actually comment I want to clarify, is in two thousand and six, when these two blocks were considered under the planning board, the planning board did not require that there be a right of way here. The applicant wanted to preserve rights to Cormier Road. And from at least my memory, and I don't have photos, a long time ago, but we wanted to make sure that what was being discussed was accurately shown on the plan. So just to clarify, if it wasn't the planning board required the right of way, um, it was a discussion as part of the subdivision approval at the time. So anyway.
Kristen, I, I know that the plan, whether before it got approved, it had to show a forty-foot right of way as to who requested it. I don't recall. But I know that it got recorded with that forty-foot right of way back in two thousand and six, and that's why we showed it currently.
Okay, um, so can you respond to the, there was a comment from the Russells about the effectiveness of a permeable, permeable pavement in a driveway and as it relates to the, the grade and pitch of the driveways? Do you have a response to that?
Yeah, that's a good question. That's a very good question, and it's a legitimate question. And that's one of the reasons we've made a, normal roads would have a crown, basically a two percent crown, quarter of an inch to the foot on a normal cross-section, which would crown the road one way or the other. And so the grade would be dictated by the slope of the grade of the road as to the effectiveness. What we have here is that we've created a hyperelevation on one side, for lack of a better term, to create a two percent cross-sectional grade. So when the theoretical raindrop hits the edge of the driveway, it follows across the driveway, not down the driveway, but across the driveway to a two percent grade, and hence gets the effectiveness of the permeable pavement.
Madam Chair, this is Rachel Bame. I just have a question for the engineer. Can I ask, can I ask a question?
You're on mute, Barbara.
I was, I'm sorry, I was on mute. Please go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Nelson, I had a quick question. So you had initially done some work based on the two thousand and six plan, is that correct?
We did plans in two thousand and four that created a twenty-foot easement. We did plans in two thousand and six that created the lot at number thirty.
Okay, and then you went, you went back to the property recently and spoke to the Russells. Was there a change, a difference in your opinion as to the drainage from what you initially saw based on the old plan and what you saw when you came out? Most recently?
Was there a change in the drainage?
Was there, yeah, was there a change in your opinion as to the drainage? Any drainage issues?
I would characterize, if I could answer the question.
Yeah.
I didn't analyze the drainage, but we did analyze with the elevations. So we did take a look at, see what the changes in topography were because it was reported to us that the Russells had in fact filled in a driveway and an old foundation where the garage was on the property. So what we did is we went out to take elevations to verify what the Russells had done. So we did verify that the topography had changed in spots out of the property, that their property line hadn't changed, but the grade going up to their house had in fact changed because they built a new house. And they relocated the old driveway to the current driveway location that they have on the hill. We did not analyze the drainage, but we did analyze the topography and we did analyze and report on the differences in elevation that were partially up the hill on their property.
Okay, and did the recommendation to the applicant change after you reviewed the property again recently or, or not?
What's that again, please?
Did your view or your recommendations to the applicant change, um, based on your initial review with the old plan and your most recent review?
No, that's basically that we stood by the original design because we were going with a permeable pavement. What has been used in times past is that you use permanent pavement, uh, in, in previous, put a stone shoulder on it. Well, it was recommended to us to use the porous pavement, and that's what we recommended before we did the elevations. And it's the same recommendation we're using after the elevation. So it's the, net effect is the same results as far as the positive effect on the drainage impact.
Thank you. I just had a question for Mr. Levy also. You had mentioned that the plans were, um, had been submitted to the board and that nobody had challenged them. Can you tell me more about whether the?
You know, I'm sorry. We, I, I need to bring this back to the board. This is kind of getting, um, off into left field. Can I, so let me, I'm taking this back for now. I want to talk to my fellow board members for a few minutes. I want to find out if the board members feel comfortable voting on this tonight or if they feel they need further information. I know we've been around this a few times and it's still quite murky to me, but I don't know how my fellow board members feel and if they want to move forward with tonight or if we want to request more information and take it under advisement and then convene at our next meeting. So I'm going to ask each one of you in turn if you want to vote on this, if you feel comfortable voting on this now or if you need more information. Joe?
Well, I just, I did think, the one thing I would like to see is, uh, town council was going to get some information based on that, uh, the amendment versus, you know, the, uh, whether, whether it reversed back to the, uh, application point or whether it reversed back to the, uh, like, you know, he said he, he thought he would be able to get some case law or something, or, or maybe not case law, but references within cases that would back up his, his position on it. Because I think that's a, an important position here, uh, you know, for us to contemplate when we make this decision, you know? So I would like to see that, but that's, you know, again, that's my position on it.
Okay, so you would rather not vote tonight and wait to hear back from our town council? All right.
I would.
Member Raymond, the same question.
Usually, I agree with Joe. The other thing that I want to make sure is that any neighbors that wanted to, uh, comment on this or make a presentation have been allowed to do that.
But we, we've been allowing everyone to comment and, and I've been asked, asking if there are others. So I think so far we haven't, we have done that. But I understand you would like to wait as well. Member Covino?
What I, in, in the staff report, uh, the new piece of information I see is from the Conservation Commission. And John Keely seems to say the Conservation Commission supports the shift of the driveway, and that's what we're discussing. Further away from the pond, they did express concerns about grading drainage and tree planting associated with the driveway, which I've heard expressed by the neighbors more on numerous occasions. And, and they also say they will, however, fully review drainage and grading as part of their notice of intent permit review. And, um, I believe that I would be prepared to vote tonight as long as our decision can contain the language that, um, basically whatever the Conservation Commission, who are, who are the experts on, on grading and wildlife disturbance, et cetera, that whatever they decide is included in the decision after the fact.
Okay, thank you, Member Covino. Member Gaffney, are you comfortable voting on this tonight? For me?
Uh, I think the only thing I would say is if another member needs more information to vote, then I think, you know, we, we wait for that.
Okay, Member Espo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm comfortable voting tonight. It's my understanding that no matter which way it goes, the original decision of the subdivision will stand. And I do hear the concern of the neighbors and I definitely empathize with them. And I listen from what we heard from town council, wherever which way we vote, it's already decided. And if, uh, the neighbors do choose to challenge that, it is well within their rights. But for the issue at hand, I am more than comfortable voting on just the position of the driveway because that's all that's in front of us tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Espo. Member Rappaport?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to hear from the council and, and see what he has to say. I, I think, you know, we've heard a lot of information, but I think, um, you know, understanding, um, what council has to offer us is important. Thank you.
Given that, it's like the majority of the board wants more information from council. So I think that it's probably best if we continue this matter and we go to town council and probably have, that's an executive session to discuss this prior to our next meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of November 5th, 2020.
Second.
Can I make, just quickly with, so COVID throws everything out of the loop in terms of statutory deadlines, but I'd just like to pretend they're all in. The statutory deadline, in terms of just making the motion, the statutory deadline would be up on the October 29th. I guess I would ask that you make a motion to continue this matter and extend the statutory, mutually extend the statutory deadline at least till, you know, the Monday after that. So what is it, Monday? Fifth, sixth, ninth? November. Well, we meet on the fifth, so.
So move to extend the deadline to November 5th.
We need to go past that to five, let's say to 10.
Yeah, to 10. Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then, now that we've done that, I think we need to vote to delay, to continue this till the November 5th. Okay?
Didn't we just do that? We just continued?
Just can, oh, you did them all together as one? Okay, that's fine then.
It was a little messy, but.
All right. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So we need to write some letter.
Okay. I understand that this is...
Kristen.
Very confusing and contentious, and I understand that everyone's emotions run very high, and I appreciate the very measured and controlled discussion that we've had. I appreciate how respectful everyone has been, and I feel for you. I understand this is a very difficult situation, and please understand that we're also trying to do our best for you, but we need to understand all the issues involved more clearly. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Thank you. So as we move on, I'm trying to think where we're going to. We never did announcements. Why don't we do announcements?
All right. So those of you that are still watching, we have announcements. The mandatory water ban is still in effect, and please see the town website for more detailed information. You're not allowed to use your sprinkler system, essentially. And now to all the voting deadlines. It's a federal election, and so there's lots of dates. Early in-person voting is happening on October 17th through the 30th. It begin, it's from 8:30 AM until 1 PM at Grandview Farm. There are additional dates on evenings and weekends, and I encourage everybody to check the town calendar for more details. There'll be a Board of Health drive-through flu clinic, which is super important this year, October 17th, from 10:00 AM until 1 PM at the Burlington High School. Note about that is that the senior vaccine is not available at this flu clinic. It's just the regular, the regular dose. Board registration deadline is October 24th, and the deadline to request a ballot by mail is October 28th by 5:00 PM, and that's at the town clerk's office. And then, as always, Election Day is November 3rd, and polls open at 6:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM, and its polling is at the Burlington High School.
Thank you, Liz. So I think we are moving on now to page 11. Was this item, though, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Tina Bodywork, was this continued?
This item was continued. I did receive an email from the applicant later on in the day. It did not make it into the beginning of the staff report, but I think we can all just, you know, want to take a motion about it, that's fine.
We can take a motion, and it's my understanding that the building department still had questions regarding the layout, and so we're waiting to hear back from them. So if I may have a motion to continue this, I would appreciate it.
Can you just read officially for the record what it is?
Of course. This is item 7. Public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.20.1, massage therapy of the zoning bylaws, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall. Tina Bodywork is the applicant.
Motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of November 5th, 2023.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Next on our agenda is minutes.
Can I back up just quickly? I'm sorry. What we have on the agenda, so that item was item 8C. 8F, we didn't continue. 8F is the continued public hearing, application for approval of a definitive subdivision plan, 4 and 5 Redmond Street, Mari Hills Incorporated. They have requested that this be continued to the meeting of November 19th, and I apologize that just didn't land in the statute. So can someone make that motion to continue that matter till November 19th?
So move. Yeah, second.
So then, Liz, I need roll call.
Chairman LaRue. Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So next we have minutes, and we've, our team has been doing a great job keeping up with minutes. So thank you, Dawn. Thank you, Brady. This is wonderful. We have minutes for September 17th, 2020, and October 3rd, 2020. Hopefully, we can vote on all of them tonight. Is there anyone who cannot vote on these meeting minutes tonight? All right, then I'm ready for a motion to accept.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes of September 17th, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
I should have done them all.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Director Clerk Espo.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Raymond.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion and apologize for not including both the last motion to accept the minutes of October 3rd, 2020.
Second.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Spring.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Okay, we have another item for discussion on our agenda, item 10A, which is a discussion regarding Terry Ave lot release. Kristen, can you give us a quick update?
Sure. For those of you that have been on the board for quite some time, here and there, we find these very, very, very old things that when people do their, you know, due diligence and research on lots and title and other things, find out that back in 1975, we didn't do something. So this is one of them. 18 Terry Ave, for some reason, was never, no one can find, nor was it, doesn't appear to be at the registry, the planning board motion to release this particular lot from the covenant at the time. So that is what this is. I actually, if you don't mind, if someone wants to deputize me to read the motion, I have just a minor correction. It's just easier.
Oh, deputizing issue. Just go ahead.
Let's just get to it. Okay. So if you're all set, so then the motion, the planning board certifies that the requirements for public improvement specified in the conditional approval covenant, recorded in Middlesex South Registry of Deeds on June 27, 1975, in Book 12818, page 408. And shown on the definitive subdivision plan entitled Plan of Proposed Grading at Terry Ave in Burlington, Mass., recorded with said deed, Book 12818, page 408. Said lots are hereby released from the restrictions as to the sale and building specified herein. Lots designated on the plan as follows as lots 8 and 14. That's the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Espo.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All right. Okay. If we can do this well, we can wrap up by 8 o'clock. Do any members have any other business that they need to bring forward at this time? Miss, Member Gaffney.
Yeah, just since you're on Terry Ave, I was walking by there the other day, and we talked about this the last time with 24 Terry Ave, with there was no sidewalks, not even started, and you said there wasn't an occupancy permit for the addition there. I walked by there, and they've got a, something's going up there where the addition was, they've got a video screen up there, so if it's, there's no occupancy permit, there's something up there anyway. So again, without that sidewalk started, I don't know how they can be up there with some sort of video screen up there. So this might come into 24 Terry Ave and the sidewalk.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to give an update on that. Brady and I have been working with the applicant. Condition, the condition read that they need to construct the sidewalk up until the 100-foot buffer, as well as three trees and one streetlight. And if they were not going to do it prior to the CO, they need to fully bond the cost, and right now, we are trying to figure out what that cost may be. So we're underway, we're in process trying to get that moving forward, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kristen. Ernie, go ahead.
Yeah, just one quick, and it's only a comment, and that is, I thought the Guterres Company deserves some credit and praise for the landscaping that they have continuously put at the corner of Wayside and Cambridge Street. Looks very nice. I happened to go by there the other day with my wife, and I commented on it, and she agreed. She agrees. And actually, even across the street at, what's the street? Wall Street. Thank you. They've also done a nice job there, and, you know, it's, I think if we're going to beat them up, we also have to give them praise every once in a while, if they deserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ernie. So I actually have one other thing I wanted to announce, which I think most people have already heard, but just in case they haven't, it's very exciting, that the American Dog Sculpture on the Common has a name. We had a huge contest, we had over 200 names suggested. We narrowed it down to 10. We had voting over the last 10 days or so. We got almost, it was, it was almost 1,000 votes. It was over 900 votes or something like that. It was a really hot topic, and the new name for the dog is Havoc. That's H-A-V-O-C, and he is named after the recently retired police service dog of the same name. And the real havoc came to our naming announcement and ceremony the other day. He was just, he was very excited to be there and clearly very impressed with the stature. Anyway, so the dog is now named Havoc, and I think that the whole community seems really excited about it. So that's all. All right, ready for a motion?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Member Chairman LaRue.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Impamba.
Yes.
Member Clerk Raymond.
Yes.
Member Covino.
Yes.
Member Gaffney.
Yes.
Vice Spago.
Yes.
Member Rappaport.
Yes.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
The three of us did all great.
Don't forget to vote.
To breezy, so.